I would. That minutes pertaining to an individual's job performance or character, pre-deprivation hearings and non-renewal of teacher contracts remain sealed.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Legori. There's been a motion by Ms. Luzon and a second by Ms. Legori to recommend that the minutes pertaining to individuals' job performance or character remain sealed. It's on pre-deprivation hearings and non-renewal of teacher contracts. Those in favor? Me opposed or recusals, abstentions? Okay, so that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to litigation, RGB update remains sealed.
So moved.
There's been a motion by Ms. Luzon and a second by Ms. McAllister to recommend that the minutes pertaining to litigation, RGB update remains sealed. Those in favor? Any opposition? Abstentions, recusals? No, that was unanimous. Thank you very much.
I recommend that minutes relating to the privacy of students and their records, approval of home instruction requests remain sealed.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister, then Ms. Luzon. Ms. Luzon made a motion, Mr. Callister seconded, to recommend that the minutes relating to the privacy of students, their records, approval of home instruction requests remain sealed. Those in favor? Okay, any opposition? No abstentions, recusals? That's unanimous also. Thank you very much. Ms. Juisty?
Thank you. Executive session votes. The first was non-renewal of teacher contracts. In favor Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juisty, Legori, Luzon, Lyle, McAllister, Reynolds, and Spears. The next were executive session minutes of January 11th, 2022, home instruction requests approved by Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Juisty, Legori, Luzon, Lyle, McAllister, Reynolds, and Spears, Mr. Day abstained. Home instruction requests from tonight, all were in favor Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juisty, Legori, Luzon, Lyle, McAllister, Reynolds, and Spears. And finally, it was unanimous vote to return to open session Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juisty, Legori, Luzon, Lyle, McAllister, Reynolds, and Spears. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juisty. Okay, we're on to recognition. Superintendent Picard?
So please join me in congratulating the following students. High school junior Madeline Lucia received two silver keys and a gold key for her photography entries in between the lines, silver and reflection silver and thoughts by the seaside gold in the Rhode Island Scholastic Art Competition. Her gold key winning work will automatically advance to the national level of adjudication in New York City in March. We also have Margaret Whedon and Erin Van Hoozen each finished first in two events in the Sullivan Division Girls Indoor Track Dual Meet at the Providence Career and Technical Academy. Margaret took first place in the high jump and long jump, and Erin took first place in the 1500 and the 1000. Kenyon Baker finished first in the shot put in the Boys Southern Division Indoor Track Meet at the Providence Career and Technical Academy. Chargers took first in the Griswold Wrestling Tournament. Brady Anderson, Corbin Mariah, and Ryan Courier each finished first in their respective weight class. Gary Gardner won three matches with pins at a quad wrestling meet against Exeter West Greenwich, Coventry, and Bishop Hendrickson. He is 8-0 with eight pins. We were informed by the Rhode Island Interscholastic Athletic Administrator Association that Charahoe Regional High School is receiving the George Nasuti School of the Year Award for Athletics. We were also informed that our girls soccer coach Brittany Godbo is receiving the Female Coach of the Year, and Stephanie and Dan Potts are receiving the Sister Charlene Tedeschi Distinguished Service Award. Congratulations to all.
Awesome. Go Chargers. Okay, so now we're in part of our agenda, which is public forum. Those from the public will have an opportunity to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. If you are wanting to speak, you can use the raise your hand format. In what we'll do is we'll allow you to be, it will allow you into the, into the panel. So any of you who would like, okay, I have one, Mr. Hopkins. Mr. Hopkins, you have the floor.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Frank.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Frank Hopkins. I'm from the town of Charlestown. I'm a retired healthcare administrator, a Rotarian, a longtime volunteer in the Charahoe School System. And I'm here tonight to share with the committee in the community listening in for a life-changing opportunity for those of you who want to make a difference in a child's future. The abundance of skills and talents each of us has can be shared with our youth in a nurturing compassionate environment, and you can make surprising impacts on the development of our students. Our community family has a rich diversity of attributes and gifts, and you can be an amazing influence by sharing those with the youth of our community. How can you do that? You can join our mentoring program, which is open to middle and high school students. What do you need to be a mentor? A sincere desire to be involved with a young person, respect for young people, empathy, active listening skills, the ability to see solutions and opportunities. What can you do as a mentor? You can share time with a student, listen to their aspirations and hopes for the future, find a common skill or talent you can help them learn, share a group experience with us, like a kayak ride down the Wood River, a group swim at the Y, an obstacle course at Camp Watchhog. Help a student navigate a summer job application or a college visit. What do you get back? You make a difference in someone's life and improve their self-esteem. You can achieve personal growth and learn about yourself, understand other cultures and appreciate diversity, meet other volunteers and staff, and be changed, and you will be changed by your relationship with that student. If you go to the Charahoe School District website under Parents/Student Resources, you'll see the Chill Charahoe Mentoring Program. It explains the program and has a mentor application. We have a real need for male mentors and hope that the gentlemen in our community will step up. We hope you'll consider joining us on this most rewarding journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Next one is Pixel 3A XL. You are allowed to, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, if we could just make sure we get everybody's name and the town that they're from, I would appreciate it.
I will, thank you, Ms. Yeah. Could you please introduce yourself? Pixel 3A XL. You're not, you have to unmute.
Okay. My, um, this is Goldie Williams.
Where are you, where are you from?
They're meeting this Thursday. At the February 10th at the Cala Building. Is it virtual or is it at 2:30?
Um, there is a CAB Cala meeting at 2:30. And it's a public meeting, so I know I'm part of that, so I can answer that question.
Is it in person or is it a virtual?
It's in person.
Okay. And we can ask whatever questions we have on the Cala program.
Well, it's basically based on our CAB, it's what we're, the work we're doing to improve the experience for the students in that school.
Well, when my son was in the Rise for North Cala, there was no pleasant trees. And he was bullied the full time he was there.
And this is not a, I'm sorry, this is not the forum. You are welcome to attend that CAB Cala meeting and as a parent, but it's, it's really, we do a lot, we work at that meeting. There's a lot of good work that's going on, but you're welcome to come and see what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the from the public that would like a chance to speak? Please raise your hands or hand. Oh, Mr. Perney, I see that you have your hand raised. Okay, I'm going to promote you to panelists because you have an older version of Zoom, Mr. Perney. There you are.
Good evening, Ms. Lyle. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the patience there getting connected. Well, I just wanted to bring up and was, I guess, wondering when, when the meetings would, I guess, start back in person. We're through kind of the Omicron variant here, we're through the Delta variant, and, you know, we kind of went through those in person, and now the fact that we're kind of through those, I know things change pretty much on the daily basis here. I was wondering when meetings would be back in person.
Ms. Picard, do you want to address that as far as what we know?
I know that right now the executive order ends February 14th. I know the governor's speaking tomorrow, and I'm, I've heard from the town managers that there may be hybrid options or virtual options continue, but I'm not sure. I think he's going to address it tomorrow.
Yeah, so the governor will have that in his address tomorrow.
Madam Chair, I just love that date.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, bad joke.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hopefully, Mr. Perney, hopefully we'll all know something soon in the very near future, and hopefully tomorrow he'll have some information or news for us. Because we're all anxious to see, you know, when we can get back to person also.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Take care, folks.
You're welcome. Does anyone else from the public have their, please come forward, raise your hands and I, Mr. Hopkins, I see you still have your hand raised. I don't think you have any up there. Do you want, do you want to speak again? Miss, Mr. Hopkins?
No, I'm sorry, Linda.
That's okay. That's okay. I was just going to make sure. Okay, thank you. Just. Well, I don't see anybody else from the public who has their hands raised, so I think we can move on to business at this point. Thank you very much, and thank you for those who came forward. We're on to business.
So the first business item is the CTE Equipment Grant. It was due to a quick turnaround. Director Jerry Orth and Katie Karikosian submitted this grant request on January 28th to ride based on their deadline. I recommend approval of the CTE Equipment Grant request to ride in the amount of $221,407.52 for the Charahoe Tech Program Equipment, and Director Orth is available if there's any questions.
So moved.
So I have, okay, so I have a, have a twin. So we had a motion by Ms. Luzon, a second by Catherine Juisty to approve the CTE Equipment Grant. I'd like to open this up to any questions or comments. Mr. Orth is here if you have any questions. I think it's a great idea. I hope we can get some of this, these funds, which would be great. Mr. Orth, do you have anything you'd like to add to the, to the conversation before we take a vote?
I don't want to stir the pot. I'm happy everyone's silenced.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I'll take that to a vote. Those in favor to approve the grant? Any opposition? No, any recusals or abstentions? Great, it was unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for putting that grant together too, Mr. Orth and Ms. Faz and the whole crew. Okay, so B.
Next is the 2022-2023 High School Program of Studies. The only changes are the dates, the new personnel, and the addition of the course descriptions the school committee approved, which is statistics, college prep, and statistics honors courses. I recommend approval of the 2022-2023 High School Program of Studies, and Jean Brennini is available if you have any questions.
So moved.
I thought, okay, Ms. Luzon made the motion, and Ms. Chambers seconded to approve the 2022-23 High School Program of Studies. Anyone have any questions? Ms. Chambers?
Just, just a comment. It gave us an opportunity to look over the, the Program of Studies for the whole, you know, all of it. And I am so impressed with the offerings that we are providing for our children. It's amazing how many courses there are and choices there are for these kids. It's exciting, and I just commend anyone that's involved in putting this together. I think it's an excellent high school program.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. I guess there's no other discussion. Oh, Mr. Day, do you have your hand raised, sir?
Yes, I was looking at the student activities here on the back page of the book, booklet here. And I might be, I don't mean to be nitpicking, but with student activities. I think we might be missing a couple of them here. I know that we have a co-ed hockey team, and we have wrestlers, swimmers, and, and other individuals, and I, and I don't notice I'm listed here, and I think if we're going to try to highlight student activities, we ought to, we ought to make sure that we're, we're including all of them for, for our students. That's my sports, that's my sports tie-in with, with the, with the district, I guess.
Do we have, are they all, did we, we check those, Ms. Picard? Superintendent Picard, are we missing any?
Um, to Bill's point, I, I don't see the, the new girls, the co-ops, and I don't see the other one from last year. My wonder is, is is there, is it because of that we're not the lead school? I, but I can ask. I don't think that's a concern to add. I think it's always nice to show all the programming that's available, so I'll have a double check.
I agree.
Well, I've always been an advocate that we should be tooting our own horn because nobody else around here will toot it for us, so the more, the more that we can put out there, and I think is a feather in our cap if someone is thinking about coming into the tech that can qualify for the co-ed hockey team and come from a school that doesn't have hockey and play hockey here, which might help your little tech program.
And as to your point, Mr. Day, I don't think we added the esports as well, which was a new one that from the last meeting, so I can have.
I don't consider that a sport. Serious. I voted for it, but.
What's an activity? It's an activity. It's not a sport. It's an activity. Mrs. Luzon, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, as much as, I have two daughters, and they both play field hockey, and as much as I grew to love the game of field hockey, it is on here twice. Yep, girls' field hockey and field hockey.
Should it say boys' field hockey?
We don't have a boys' field hockey.
Oh. See, I didn't know that.
That was a good catch. Thank you.
So do we want to vote with those changes, or do we want to see these changes before we vote on it?
Personally, I think that we've brought it up. It's going to get changed, but I, I still feel we can follow through on the vote.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone's comfortable with that and make sure those things. Any, any other pickups or any other things? Maybe we can have somebody take a second peek at that, Ms. Picard. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions or additions? Those are all great, great finds. Okay, I'll take this to a vote. Those in favor to accept the Program of Studies with the amendments that will come forward. Any against, opposed? Abstentions or recusals? That was unanimous. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is the High School Mathematics Resource Selection. I know Dr. Carmella's already on the line, and I know we have Susie Skidnae-Gieg, who's going to review the presentation, so I'm going to promote Susie to the panelist.
And Gina, she, you could share a screen, allow her to share.
Yes, I would absolutely. I'm going to make her. Okay. Ms. Skidnae-Gieg, oh, welcome. You should have sharing opportunities at this point, so if you want to check it, I'll make sure that works.
Can you all save a screen? Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, everyone. It's been a while since I've seen you last. I'm here tonight to review the selection of the new curriculum resources that we've chosen at the high school level, just to review. Let me put this in presentation mode. Can you see that well?
Yes.
So just to remind everyone that the reason we had gone through this selection was because of Rhode Island legislation that said that by June of 2023, we were required to pick resources that were considered green on an Ed Reports list. The idea being that that was a point of universality amongst the state, that we would all have high-quality curriculum materials to work with, and I really kind of appreciated that legislation. I think we needed to all be on the same page, and luckily, at the middle school, we started that work last year, and we were only working at getting the Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II going at the high school for this year, because those are the required courses at our school. We will also be looking at the other elective maps and getting precalculus and calculus books eventually, but at this point today, I'm going to be sharing what we found for the legislation. The three that we chose to research at the high school were two McGraw-Hill products and one Carnegie Learning product. The McGraw-Hill were one that's called the Lestive and one called Reveal. And the one at Carnegie Learning really was a simple word. It was called Math Book and Mafia Software, and all three had pros and cons, of course, but we really took our time in paying it to each of them. I created a team of volunteers that wanted to look into this set of books and resources. I'm going to actually open this padlet so that you can see it in a live way. Can you still see that screen? So I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that we did have representation of all stakeholders, so we did have a parent survey, we did have a teacher survey, we had our team that I will show you here that really had all the stakeholders involved with Dr. Carmella, who was new to us, and then Ms. Florence, who, because we teach algebra at the middle school, was involved. We had a special educator, we had the math specialist who works mostly with the RTI students, a math teacher, Mr. Main, who is the department head. We also had Mr. Bailey, who was the prior department head, myself, and Chris Carbin, who's the content leader at the middle school. So really a vast set of opinions and really different vantage points when we were looking at these materials. We had a set protocol. We really paid attention to how we were going to do all of this work and keeping ourselves accountable, so including like specific dates and times when we would come together to see both the hard copies of things, but also the digital copies, the digital resources of things, so that it wasn't too much for these volunteers in their day to sit through like a three-hour PD on all of this all at once. We really tried to give each of the different companies and their resources the time to look through them all. We basically picked one lesson, for example, you know, systems of equations in algebra, and we really tried to focus on how that was taught in three of, in the three resources, both with the online and the hard copy resources available, and that gave us a really good indicator of what we felt we were going to find the most growth with and the most comfort in a sense, too, because we are a high-tech school, and we wanted to make sure there was efficiencies and things that will let all the things we've been working so hard for in a one-to-one setting really become useful. We went through the Charahoe School District selection procedure. We did all the things with each of the options. I will spare you all of the specifics on that, but the end result was that Reveal came out with the highest score of 97, using the average of all the, all the members of the team submitted scores. So it was this, it was a collective set of data. The summary, I know you have received this slideshow in advance, so I'm sure you read this, but mainly what we want to highlight here is that Reveal offered both paper and pencil and online resources that were the most robust. We felt that they were user-friendly for both teachers and the students. We know that when things are user-friendly, the time on task is more spent on the math and not on the procedural pieces of getting to the math, and that, to me, is very important. It offered a lot of practice problems, which was something that we found in past resources wasn't enough. We also felt that there was a nice balance between theory and fluency, which we find with Common Core. So we sit between a Common Core middle school curriculum and a college experience, and so it's always a really a balancing act between the theory that is involved in Common Core standards, but also the fluency that's expected at a college level. And so we really felt that Reveal offered both. In addition to that, Reveal offers, or McGraw-Hill, I should say, offers a supplemental package with a program called Alex. And Alex is an AI program, artificial intelligence, that allows students to work at their grade levels specifically and within target areas that they are specifically lacking, maybe have a gap in because of something that happened in third grade or something like that, and it really pinpoints where they need additional help and offers a really great growth model, and we're very excited to see what that's going to bring to us. We have a similar one working at the middle school right now, and we're already seeing gains by the, my path, I'm sure you heard it in your other discussions, and we're seeing gains there. Alex is similar in a lot of ways, but it's at the high school level, and so we're hoping to see really great gains for especially the gapped students, so we're thinking that's going to be a really great useful piece for RTI. Once we picked Reveal and Alex, we had another group of teachers that really became our early adopters, and they have started already getting PD. They had two hours of PD for Reveal and one hour PD for Alex already. We did this in a voluntary way. They are our spring pilot, and so hopefully we get some of the technology glitches out of the way, things that, you know, our resources. Luckily, Sean Cole is excellent and very, very helpful, but of course, when anything's new, there's going to be a glitch here and there, and between everybody working together, we've already ironed out quite a few of them, so that September will be a much stronger start. Again, I use the, a padlet for organization purposes here, just to keep everyone in the loop. The customer service at McGraw-Hill has been unbelievable, and even when we have just a simple little issue, they are quick to respond and working with our technology department really, really well, and we just overall have found that their professional development is exemplary. We've already seen in just a couple of days that they've been on it, that there's people using the Alex program, which is great. That means they are eager to get working on it. Again, it's a pilot, but it could have had zero percents there in the few days, and yet we're already seeing some usage, and that's really great. That's all I have for you tonight, but I'm sure there are questions and concerns, so please feel free to ask me those.
We're back to screen. Does anyone have any questions for the team? For Susie or and or Mr. Carmel, Dr. Carmel?
I think I'm most excited that the teachers seem very engaged at this point and eager to get started. They were part of the process the whole way through. And I think with the fact that we've gone through this once with the middle school and had the spring pilot, and that's, you know, it's going to still have bumps, of course, because it's a brand-new program, but that pilot really helps, and so the high school taking on that same model is really nice. And so far, we're already hearing good things.
Ms. McAllister, you have the floor. Do you have a question or comment?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to say how impressed I am with the amount of work that was put into this selection. I, I know it's difficult, and when you're having to look at several different programs. This one was, you just put it together very carefully, and it's very impressive, and we thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. I think the, the work that was done was very thorough and very thoughtful, so I think they, you know, you, you did, you did the job, and you, you chose one that's best for, for our school community and for our teachers also, so. I, I think it was, thank you very much for all that, that work and time. Anybody else have any questions? This is Ms. Chambers.
This was great. I, I also loved the presentation. I have one of those math books that I picked up at a convention, and it is excellent, and I don't know the others that you were choosing from, but this is an excellent series, very deep, very comprehensive, heavy books. heavy books. But they're good, very well presented, and I love that it integrates the technology along with the the work in the book. So it's excellent, Suzie. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. I do think that that was a real um want from the teachers was the option between pen, paper and pencil and online and that choice being almost a daily choice, not a year long, month long, quarter long choice, but today with this particular lesson, it's gonna be better to work with paper and pencil. Tomorrow, we might practice that same skill online and having that flexibility and possibly having that flexibility even amongst students. You three might work on a workbook while you three might be working on the online because it's your best learning experience. That's really what they were hoping to get.
Excellent. Very good. Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so any other questions? Thank you so much. Thank you very much. That was a phenomenal presentation and very excited.
So am I. I'm a math nerd, so. I get very excited about these books. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I guess we're on to um the budget.
Yes, so uh adjustments to the uh fiscal year twenty three budget. This is the opportunity for adjustments to be made prior to approval, at which time it then becomes the school committee's budget. Fund balance was reduced to two percent at the last budget workshop. Um, per your school committee policy, this can't go any lower. Um, this is not the last time the committee can lower the budget um or change the budget. If adjustments are made, I would request that the committee provide a short recess so that um Finance Director Ned Draper can recalculate some figures if needed.
So this is the time, if anyone wants to open up a discussion about any adjustments with regards to the um FY twenty three budget. Yes, Mr. Luzon.
Uh, my question is basically, I mean, it some things alluded to in D two, but we're discussing D one. Can I bring up something that's in D two?
I think you can bring up anything in the budget.
Yeah, anything in the budget. Yeah, at this point.
Okay, uh, when was the additional revenue calculated in after our last budget workshop or prior to tonight?
Um, Mr. Draper, yes, please.
I I think that language is included so that we cover any adjustments we make. Uh, but we did not have additional revenue.
Oh. I'm not reading it right. Ned is reporting that the total amount reductions, including additional revenue to date is five hundred thousand one hundred sixty four. I thought that's what we reduct, uh, we reduced it by, but I I just assumed that that was in reference to revenue.
Well, the way the reason that is there parenthetically is when we do the adjustment to our fund balance for for purposes of our accounting, it's treated as a revenue.
Okay.
If you go to section, yeah, if you go to section five of our budget, you'll see it listed in the revenue section.
I'm just interpreting the way it's written. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Luzon. Ms. Juicy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so there was a little bit of conversation today about um the reduction of some classrooms in some of the elementary schools. And I had emailed Gina and Ned to get the financial impact of that. Can you talk about that a little bit in terms of um the thoughts behind reducing those teachers specifically at Richmond Elementary School? Um, because if depending on the conversation, I might want to talk about adding back to the budget. So that's why it's germane to this particular um agenda item. So if you could talk about that a little bit and then maybe the fiscal impact of adding back a teacher, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So um this year, and again, this isn't done consultation. All the principals review with us, um, the numbers, their school data, that the needs are across the board. So based on the current structure, there would be a reduction in kindergarten. We sort of overshot the kindergarten classroom with the uncertainty due to the pandemic, the additional spacing that was necessary, the uncertainty of the new developments in Richard Richmond. We weren't, uh, we didn't know the families, the ages of the students or the grades. So we had added the additional one. Um, and also the history enrichment is really that families um tend to register very last minute. So it provides some uncertainty to ensure to ensure we would have overcapacity, we added a classroom in K. Um, it it is the numbers in kindergarten in Richmond are the lowest in the district. Most of our kindergartens in Ashway, Hope Valley and in Charleston are on twenty one to twenty. And Rich, uh, Richmond's are about fifteen to seventeen students per class. So we moved that back down based on our our current review of the numbers and the census in the area around students of age for kindergarten. So that was why that was one reduction in kindergarten. The other reduction came to grade two. So the grade two, uh, and it was very similar based on the overall review of the numbers and the decreased number. So I think, for example, in the budget currently uh projected, we're projecting in grade two next year approximately seventy eight students. And what we're, what we're seeing um is we're, we're actually lost a few more. So we're down to seventy six. So the numbers are decreasing. Some have moved out. And based on those, those numbers, which we put the classrooms at twenty to twenty one as well. Um, overall, um, that that was the overall reasoning. And again, talking with Ms. Martin again today about her comfort level with how the structures look. And as you know, we we keep an eye on the numbers. Typically, if we see anything that gets to twenty three, we start to make some changes. I know that's been the past history as well. I do look at the numbers with our data analysts, or I think Fitzgerald and the principals monthly to keep an eye. So sometimes the projected numbers in November do tend to come down. Right now, we have no, no room has been increasing. All uh numbers have been decreasing, if anything, not by a lot, but you'll see two to sometimes two to four students, at least so far in the fall that we've, that we um anticipated that have left the one of the towns. That was the overall rationale, the big picture uh we view. But we also uh also looking at data to um to this kind of Pico's point. We're noticing huge growth at all our elementary schools based on beginning of the year data to middle of the year. Um, we're really encouraged by what we're seeing. I think we all knew with day to day instruction being more consistent with in person learning, we were going to see natural growth. But we also see students surpassing stretch goals, which is really nice to see at this time of the year. And we're keeping a close eye on that as well.
Okay, that's part one of Miss her, your question. Part two, I think Catherine, you wanted to know what the budget impact would be if we wanted to add either one or two teachers back.
So typically, unless the teacher um is, you know, one of the teachers that would, let's say, was a filling in or uh not necessarily uh tenured, you would have rights back to your position. So if if I calculated based on the teachers going back to the position that they were put in, and if there was no changes and they, if they didn't change healthcare, for example, you're probably looking about a hundred and fifty four thousand to return both classrooms to Richmond. And um they, they're, they're uh have less than you already where like a school like Charleston has a more veteran staff, you'd look more in the one twenty range.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I want to see how the rest of the conversation kind of goes before I make any recommendations. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lucy. Mr. Day, you had your hand raised and then Mr. Luzon. Mr. Day, you have the floor?
We've tried in the past few years to uh balance out our classes by changing the Charahoe Act to the point where we could have lower class, class sizes throughout the district, but uh it falls back on the town, towns not embracing the way to have smaller classes and cost less money to transport these kids around. So uh it's, it's difficult, uh, but you know, until, until the three towns decide to work together and make this district uh more tax fan, taxpayer friendly a- as it pertains to keeping, keeping the the budget down. And we're gonna continue to have spikes. And we're gonna have some classes that in some schools are gonna be down as seventeen, eighteen kids and other classes are gonna be up at the at the, at the max for the, the contract. So until the towns get together and decide that uh Charahoe is, is one community as far as the school district goes, uh, this is never gonna, gonna uh gonna happen. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Ms. Luzon and then Mr. and then Mr. Callahan. Ms. Luzon, you have the floor?
I don't want to just be known that Richmond may be in need because Charleston first grade is gonna be pretty tough next year also. Um, and my other question would be um hypothetically, let's just say we live with what we have. And come September first, all of a sudden our numbers really jump up and we have to add three teachers. Are we gonna be in a pickle? Come that time, Ned?
So it's so to to follow on for that unofficial term, uh, yes, we'll, we'll be in a, we'll be in a pinch. The things, you know, there's some things we can do. They're, they're not great. Some of them might include adjusting our S R. Some of them might include adjusting when we uh do some of those investments. But they create problems down the road. So even if you can get through a year, uh, you create some, some other problems that are unforeseen. So yes, we, we would be in a very difficult spot.
So if we don't possibly address this now, it, we could possibly have problems, or we may not. We don't know. I'm just asking what has to be asked. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I was saying, we, we do also, we view the homeschool numbers. So when we do our um overalls, we sometimes figure in if students return back to homeschool, like for Ms. Luzon, when you mentioned um the first grade at Charleston, we've already seen actually three students have um have left already. So I, it was a projected at sixty six. We're now currently at sixty three. Um, and and most have moved out of the state, not those that have left, but um to your point, the, the oftentimes the hardest number get to figure out is kindergarten. Right now, nobody has new developments happening, although what we're seeing in Charleston is people are moving in, but more um out of state families. Uh, many who didn't have uh children.
Right.
What's up, Ms. Luzon? You good? Okay, uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Callahan.
Uh, thanks, Chair. Uh, Gina, I guess one of the, the things that um you know, I'm hearing from, from folks in, in my town is the concern that um, there's a lot of, there's a, a big difference between having a class size of twenty and having a class size of twenty and trying to deal with challenges um in that, in that classroom as well. Can you, you know, can you walk me through your discussion with, with um Ms. Martin and the confidence level that she and her have come up with that that's not gonna be an issue? And about um maybe close out on some of the, the services that you're providing uh in that area?
Yeah, sure. Uh, Richmond, a few years back had added uh the Behavior Management Assistant. I, my understanding uh from Ms. Martin is that that was a conversation that her and Superintendent Richie had to be able um, and actually in lieu of an assistant principal, they felt that would have been more impactful. Uh, she's seen a lot of support there, her non academic, we call it non academic RTI, which is students who have, who have a higher need. Um, I think we're all, all seeing with the pandemic, our students have had different levels of trauma or or um mental health concerns or things that have come up um due to quarantines, et cetera. Um, a lot of, you know, not being around their peers and things like that. So we actually, that's what we, a lot, a lot of our S R funding. So um, Ms. Ms. Martin felt very comfortable with the structure. Again, I, like I said, I mentioned, I spoke with her again today. She didn't feel like um they were concerned in her grade three behavior that would um, that would impact her decisions or our decisions in grade four. We also know that with the student service specialists that we're adding to the district, that's an additional support, which we heard from our teachers across the board, K through twelve, was that this was an area of need on their part, that, you know, while we're working on our mathematics, our English language arts, uh, it's social studies, et cetera, that the need to ensure that they understand that skill development around um the whole child that, to be able to support the majority of the students. And you'll always have that five percent, but she felt very confident. Um, and I, and I know I had talked to a few parents who's, who have had some history and their, and their children are now older and they have siblings in Richmond now. So the concern um that I heard was that, for example, the uh grade three, which is remaining at five classrooms, that those, those students will then move to four grade four classrooms. And I, um, the grade four was an additional again this year, but it's um that they, they get used to being together and then shifting them into uh from five to four can impact their peer to peer um relationships is, is basically. So that was a concern. I think, you know, um, we've all talked about and I think we, anyone would have the debate. I think the more one to one interaction with our teachers, with our educators is always a beneficial. It's something that Ms. Martin believes the, the structure looks good. Actually, her advocacy was that we keep the five in uh classrooms in grade three. She felt like that's where um her, her incoming grade two going to grade three was where the, the five needed to remain, which is why it did.
Ms. Callahan, you, you, any more questions? Do you all set?
Yeah, no, thank you, Gina. I appreciate the detailed response. I, I think I'm I'm okay for now.
Okay. More question.
I need to think of, yeah, I need to think on this a little bit, but I appreciate the detailed response.
I agree. Um, Mr. Day, do you, you have your hand raised? Do you have another comment? No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure. And Ms. Chambers, you had your hand raised. You're all set? Okay, we have two um attendees.
Wait a second, wait a second. Yeah, I had to unmute myself.
Okay.
Um, okay, so you may have addressed this. We had an unusual number of kids homeschooled, homeschool over the last two years. Have you considered that if the all of those kids came back because the pandemic has subsided? That we would be in trouble then? I mean, so how, what, what numbers did you play with the idea that kids would return to in person school once the pandemic has subsided?
I, I, we actually looked at those numbers when planning and the numbers um were like, so for example, we know some families have a history of long term homeschooling that, that there was no interest to return. That was not because of the pandemic. So um we ask those questions when they, when they do come out. So even um based on parents that was, let's say, said, you know, I, I'm not a fan of the mask mandate, or if you can't guarantee the mask's gonna be on, I, I'm, I'm gonna sort of hold my child at home. We factored in those in, in our um
Okay.
accounts.
Okay, so that has been a strong consideration because I know it's an unusual situation now to even think about home, parents, once they homeschool, they pretty much stick with homeschool. But be, if the reason is the pandemic and the mask and all that, then they would probably want to return. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um I do have two uh people in the public could like to have, have questions or comments, but I'd like to give it to the the committee first. Anyone else have any questions or comments? I'll go to the public. Okay, um Amanda La Duke, uh, you have the floor.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good, thank you. And Amanda, where are you from? Which town?
So I'm, I'm a parent of um a Richmond first grader, and then I'll have a kindergartner that's entering in a year, and he's currently at the Whole Valley Preschool.
Thank you.
Um, so I appreciate you guys listening, and I guess I'm just trying to clarify because there's a lot of discussion going on with the Richmond parents and um, just generally concerned about cutting staff and things like that. And so I think I misunderstood some of the stuff that was posted. So is it a cut of a kindergarten teacher and a cut of a second grade teacher? Is that correct?
Yes, Ms. uh, Ms. Picard saying yes. You have that. That is correct. That is correct information.
Okay, um Mrs. Picard, so that means that you're taking four first grade classrooms and putting them into three?
No, no, the first, there is, there's no um the first grade classrooms, there'll be four second grade, the first grade will go to four second grades. The, so we have the four first going into four second.
Oh, so the current second grade going into third will be cut to three or one less?
No, the current grade is really, uh, the car, those, we have five grade two, they're going to five grade threes.
So then I'm confused on where the cuts occurring. Sorry.
Okay, so there's a kindergarten, right now there's five kindergarten classrooms and now we're moving to four kindergarten classrooms.
Beautiful, got it.
So there's five grade two classrooms moving to four grade two classrooms because we currently have four grade one classrooms.
Okay, so if my son's a first grader, I guess, so I'm also a teacher in a different district and I, I just hope that everyone's thinking about, like, with these kids at such a young age, like, is now the best time to be making classes bigger? You know, with learning loss, like you guys were saying, social, emotional, kids being out because of the pandemic, kids being out because of homeschool. You know, seeing, you know, I'm, I run RTI, seeing the RTI numbers skyrocket, again, not reflecting Charahoe in particular, but just in general, the educational field. But I just hope we're thinking about like, like some of the other committee members have said, is now the best time to be kind of cutting those out until we kind of see how everything plays out and making sure that we have money in the budget for that. You know, as a Richmond parent, I pay a slew of taxes. You know, as a Richmond parent, I pay a slew of taxes. You know, and I want to make sure that, you know, my neurotypical child, but other children that are struggling are getting the support they need. And in a class of twenty-five, that's hard to do. That is hard to do.
And they're actually, I know classrooms set for twenty-five, but to your point, you said you have a first grader. So your first grader, there's four first grades at Richmond, they're going into four second grades next year.
I know, I'm just advocating for some of the, you know, parents that maybe have second graders that are, you know, I just, like I said, I'm speaking from the parent, but also like the teacher point of view, and I, you know, I just think it's important to keep that, you know, that it's been a rough couple of years, especially for these, for the babies. I mean, they don't even know what school is supposed to be, you know, and so I would, I just, I just want that kind of be thought out, that it's been tough, and maybe cutting teachers so classes are bigger puts just more burden on everybody, which ultimately, the kids are the ones that are going to end up struggling. But I appreciate you guys listening. Thank you for clarifying that, because obviously, things that talk sometimes are misconstrued, so I just wanted to clarify.
No worries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Purney? Mr. Purney, you have, you can speak.
Hey, thank you for having me jump in. This comes from kind of the educator perspective here as well, not necessarily a parent perspective, but I certainly understand that point of view as well. One thing that I think we need to go to Ryan's point that he had brought up, as far as some of the behavior challenges that come up maybe at Richmond, and some of his concerns as far as cutting classrooms is, you know, maybe we could put money in the budget to have maybe all of our direct support ESP members, so, you know, our TAs and BMAs. Not all of them are currently certified in CPI escalation, and I think that's something that could maybe benefit and alleviate some of the stress in those buildings. So maybe, you know, some concerns I know about behaviors, specifically in that building, maybe having folks district-wide and TAs and BMAs all be certified, and that might alleviate some of the stress and some of the anxiety that some community members may have. So just an idea to bring up and think about going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Purney. You have the floor, Pixel 3A XL.
Okay, this Goldie Williams.
I know. Hi, Goldie.
I was wondering if you figured the people who are going to leave the Richmond area to the Met and to Kingston Hill Academy and the Compass School. Have you figured that out? Because I know a lot of people in Richmond go to Compass and Kingston Hill and the Met.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Picard, do you have a?
We would have those numbers. I can get them, I can get them to the committee. Actually, you may have seen some of the reports. It shows you the number of schools, private charter, or out of district.
Yeah, I think we have those numbers, yes. Ms. Juicy, you have your hand raised?
Thank you. So based on the conversation, I will let everybody know, I'll show my hand early, that I am leaning towards adding to this budget. One of the cuts at Richmond makes complete sense, because you're just moving them along. One of the cuts, I'm just leery of, because we've we've kind of seen this battle play out before in this community, where we go down, and then the next year, it doesn't work as quite as flawlessly as we had hoped, and then we add back. So I'm leaning in that direction. This is not the only opportunity, though, for us to make adjustments to this budget. We have a public hearing, where hopefully, we'll have a little bit more participation too, to hear what other people have to say. But again, to show my hand, I'm leaning towards adding towards that budget. I don't know that I have the support for that tonight, but I'm thinking if we ruminate on it a little bit, and we have another public hearing, I might have another opportunity to get a little bit more support. And I'll also add that we cut a fair amount from this budget, and nobody really asked us to. That was kind of a forward-thinking decision that we made as a committee, knowing the way that things typically go. So I am more comfortable adding back to the budget than I would have been in previous years. So just so everybody kind of knows what I'm thinking, put it out in the public sphere, so other committee members know, this is where my, this is kind of what I'm thinking. I'm not quite ready to do it tonight, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Juicy. Dr. Callahan, you have the floor, and then Karen, you're next. Ryan?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Yeah, thanks, Catherine. I think you, I share your opinion and leanings, for sure. I think that the going from five classes in third grade this year to four classes for fourth grade next year is where my concern is. Anyways, but I do want to, you know, think over the numbers a little bit in terms of making a final decision, but I am leaning in the same direction as you. So thanks for articulating that.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds, you have the floor?
Leaning towards where Catherine and Ryan are, it's not the time to be cutting, especially with everything that we're seeing. And we don't know the numbers with the number of kids who are outplaced either in charter schools or homeschooling, who might come back in. And the numbers are kind of tight. I think it's not the time. We cut some from the budget, and we could definitely add back, which would benefit.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Legori, you have the floor?
Thank you, Chair. I agree largely with Catherine and Ryan and Karen and others. I think there's opportunity, though, to think about this far deeper than just the numbers. The numbers tell part of the story, but not the whole story. And I don't know how we can do this, but there may be an opportunity to track what happens after students go from a smaller class to a larger class, and how they perform academically, for sure. I think that can be tracked, and possibly behaviorally. You know, it would seem like there's an opportunity within any given class to track behavioral issues that arise, both during the time there's larger classes and then in the following year. So while I am leaning towards the same direction Catherine's in, I feel like it's important that we make these decisions based on some semblance of evidence to support it. I hear everyone saying, and while I don't disagree, I hear everyone saying, this isn't the time. I would argue it's never the time to cut staff and make larger classrooms, but I think we have to provide something more to our constituents than this isn't the time, that we have to actually say, here's why we're doing it. We have the evidence to support that there's a need for this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Legori. Ms. Chambers, you have the floor?
Yes, I'm concurring with everything that was said, but I also want to remind everyone that we are cutting the fund balance, okay? And I just really believe we should, I would rather err on the side of overstaffing and not having to hire more people than to understaff and then have to scramble at the last minute. This committee, as long as I've been part of it, has always advocated for fair and and smaller class sizes, okay? We've always leaned in that direction, as far as I can remember. And I would hate to have to, at the last minute, have to overburden a class because we just underfunded the staffing, the staffing. So I am leaning toward not cutting at least all, not cutting all of it, cutting maybe one or two, one position, but not all of these. I just think we need to budget appropriately for this concern. That's it.
Okay. Ms. McCallister, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Is there any chart or some place where these numbers are put together? I tend to be a visual learner.
So funny, I was just going to ask that, too.
If I could see the difference between last year or what we're doing this year and next year, that would help me a lot, and the numbers in those classes.
In your budget book, I believe it's section
seven? Is it seven?
Section seven, correct. So, okay, I just have, Chair, may I ask, just to follow up questions in those? And I know no one's made any decisions yet, but the cuts were in kindergarten and grade two, but it sounds like the committee concern is making sure that the grade three rolls up to grade four. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay, I just want to make sure. Not the cut, but the fact that we move the grade three and keep it at five. All right, just so I understand that we're on the same page.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. McCallister, do you have?
No, like I said, I think I just need to see those numbers. I do know that third graders, I taught third grade for years, and third graders going into fourth grade are much more able to deal with larger classrooms. There's much more cooperative work that's done. But we didn't have pandemics either. So, you know, that's just an observation from my years there. But they're much more able to have higher numbers. But that being said, I just would like to look at those numbers too, and compare the years and what we're looking at for numbers in classrooms for next year.
Yeah, and just, I know one of the notes too, that's probably important to pull out for Richmond, is Ms. McHugh's class is incorporated in these numbers. So like, for example, you may see eighty-six projected for grade four, and there's actually, let's say, one student or one or two students in Ms. McHugh's class, for example. So those numbers are incorporated by grade level, even though they're not necessarily in the classrooms. So I can put together a table, so the committee can sort of take a look at the current numbers now in seats, because those are, what you have at the budget package is projected, and that's when we figure out homeschools, et cetera. But we've had have a few leave, and then, and that's what we figure in, if homeschool students would return, for example. But I can get you the current enrollment.
Thank you.
Ms. Luzzon, you had your hand up? Thank you, whoever.
Well, thank you very much, Chair. I just want to remind people, I said in the beginning, it's not just Richmond that's being impacted. Charleston grade one is going to have a very large class size next year. So I just don't want it to be known that, oh, we're going to try to address Richmond's needs. I'm going to get a little territorial here and say, you know, I want to address all the needs. So that's three great classrooms we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luzzon. We don't need you to get territorial. I was just going to mention that if we get those numbers, I'd like to see how it affects all the classes in all of Charro. Ms. Juicy, I'm sorry, I didn't want to overstuff you, but.
Nope, that's fine. And to Craig's point, yes, I was absolutely looking at the Charleston numbers. I had asked Ned for those as well. So Charleston would not be forgotten. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I don't think at this point there's any person who wants to make a motion. We want to kind of ruminate, think about it, maybe get some more feedback at the public meeting, that might be, you know, but we're, some of us are leaning towards maybe adding a certain staff or two. Okay, that was a good discussion. Anyone else? Anybody in the public have a comment before we move on? This is the time, if you have one, because this is, you know, we need the information from our constituency as far as with regards to the budget. Good, I, is it Ms. Brennan? There you are.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, yes. This is Thea Brennan. I'm a Richmond resident. I have two children at Richmond Elementary. I know I had emailed the school committee and Ms. Picard. And basically, my concern as a parent is we have several current grades right now, currently kindergarten, second grade, and third grade all have five classrooms. So with the projected enrollment for next year, the only grade that will have five classrooms is the third grade, the new third grade for next year. So I know it looks a little bit confusing, because it looks like you're losing a second-grade class. And I understand that the current first grade only has four classes, so next year, they'll still be in four classes. But currently, kindergarten has five classes, they'll be down to four, and then third grade has five classes, and next year, in fourth grade, they would also go down to four. And I know in Richmond, historically, there's been issues where when those five classes have been downsized to four or four down to three, that's been problematic. And so that's a concern for myself and some other parents, is that it's not only the number of students, but the number of classrooms, and then those supports as well. And I know I looked at the numbers for the other schools, and the numbers may look a little bit different, but also, a lot of times, like Ashway has two classrooms, they always have two classrooms. So those children aren't then decreasing into one classroom. So that's where some of the concern is, as a Richmond parent. But I did in my email also note concern for Charleston having twenty-two students in each of their four classrooms as well. So I appreciate each and every one of you. I think this has been a great conversation, and I thank you for taking the time to listen and taking the time to think about it.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night. I don't see anybody else with their hands raised. Anybody from the committee? That was a great, I agree, it was a great conversation. So are we ready to approve the FY twenty-three budget, or do we want, I don't know how that works, because it sounds like, I know we can make changes, but is this the meeting we're supposed to approve it? I can't remember. Yes, it is.
Except.
Except.
This is the meeting, it's approved, but you still can make changes, but you approve a budget tonight.
So we can, okay.
It becomes the school committee's budget after tonight.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, just wanted to make sure the date's correct.
Dr. Callahan, you want the honors?
I'm waiting for Gina to make the recommendation.
Right.
I actually, I'm going to do that right now. So if there are no adjustments made this evening, and based on the current budget that we're moving forward, and the school committee accepts, and I am looking for your approval, that you will see that Charleston would have an increase overall of two-point-five-nine percent, Richmond an increase of two-point-zero-five percent, and Hopkinton an increase of one-point-zero-five percent. And I am recommending that the committee approve the FY twenty-three budget in the amount of fifty-five million, six-hundred-ninety-three thousand, four-hundred-and-five dollars, an overall increase of one-point-eight-one percent.
Don't move.
Second.
There's been a motion by Dr. Callahan in the second by Mr. Luzzon to accept the FY twenty-three budget in the amount of fifty-five million, six-hundred-ninety-three thousand, four-hundred-and-five dollars, an overall increase of one-point-eight-one percent. Open this up to discussion and your questions. I think we did already have a lot of discussions. Okay. I'll take it to a vote. Those in favor of the approval of this budget, and it'll become now the school committee budget. Okay, any opposed? Recusals or abstentions? That's unanimous. Now, we can still continue to make adjustments as we're still working through the budget. It just now becomes our budget and not the superintendent's budget anymore. She can pass it on to us. Okay. So now we're on to consent agenda items. Does anyone want anything pulled from that?
A one?
A one minutes? A two, a three? No? No, just a one? Okay, just a one? Anyone else want anything pulled from? Mr. Day? Where is Mr. Day? There he is. Mr. Day?
Yeah, I.
Thank you, Catherine.
Item E on a balance sheet, I just want to make a comment on it. I don't necessarily want to want to pull it, but I just did want to make a comment on it.
We can pull it if you want to make a comment. It's fine. That's why we will pull them, so we can make comments. That's fine, thank you. So we'll go back to E. Anyone else want anything pulled before we? Nope. Okay. Someone make a motion for me?
So Madam Chair, I make a motion, I make a motion to move the remainder, but before I do, I want to recognize donations. One, a donation from Staples of North Kingston from Rebecca Waltney of Miscellaneous School Supplies to Richmond Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Luzzon. Second, we have a second. We have a a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Those in favor? a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Those in favor? Any opposition? Recusals or abstentions? No? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve A one executive session minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Approval of the executive session minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Minutes not sealed.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Ms. Luzon, a second by Mr. Callahan to approve the executive session minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Any discussion on those minutes or additions? No? Okay, I'll move it to a vote. Those in favor? Any opposition? Recusal?
I'm abstaining.
Abstain. Thank you, Mr. Day. Mr. Day abstain. Mr. Day, balance sheet, you had a question on six E balance sheet.
Madam Chair?
Oh, wow, I'm sorry.
I make the motion to accept E, the balance sheet.
Oh, thank you very much. I forgot about that. We haven't done that. There's a motion to accept E balance sheet, second by Mr. Callahan. Any, now we open it up to discussion. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mr. Day, you have the floor?
Yes, the balance sheet, I was not concerned about first part of the balance sheet. I was concerned about the Charro District Activity Student Activities Fund. This has been an issue of mine for a number of years, and I'm going to bring it, I'm going to bring it up for discussion and future agenda, but I want, I would respect that our school committee members look at the balance of some of these teams in the middle school. We spent some time here talking about, you know, equality and stuff like that. But if you take a look at, I'm not going to get into it, I'm just saying, but if you take a look at the 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 money that some of these teams have in their in their SAF account. The question to me rises, what are the other kids that don't have balance sheet balances like this getting as far as education in the middle school? So I want to, I'm going to have to ask that as a agenda item for future school committee meeting, but I think it needs to be addressed and it needs to be addressed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day. I put, I noted that as a future agenda item for us, so I'll make sure that it gets on. Run to reports.
So the subcommittee reports.
No, excuse me, we have to take a vote.
Oh, we have to take a vote. Okay. Do we have a, okay, so we had a motion to. What was the motion, Mr. Luzon, that you made a motion to?
To accept E.
Okay, so we now we all make a vote to accept it? Okay, so those in favor to accept E? Thank you. Those opposed? Okay, recusal or abstentions? Okay, thank you. That was unanimous. Thank you, Donna. Okay, now we're on to reports.
Okay, we had subcommittee reports, anti-racism task force met on January thirty-first. The next scheduled meeting will be February twenty-eighth. The Special Education Advisory Committee met on January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. In my report, we are moving forward and at the Health and Wellness Team, we'll be discussing the peer-to-peer mentoring program. That meeting is on March eighth. That's something that we're looking to do at the middle school and high school with the support of the Collins Foundation. It was actually brought to us by Ms. Nelson, who is a strong advocate for the mental health needs of our families and students, as well as our panelists that we've had, Lea Raposa, in coordination with the fact that peer-to-peer mentoring would support our narrative of support for our students at middle school and high school level. So we'll have more of that conversation, sort of an intro meeting to be discussing our opportunities to be able to participate. It already exists in South County and South Kingston, Narragansett, North Kingston, to name a few. So we're excited to hear more about that at the Health and Wellness Meeting on March eighth. And coming events, we have early release day coming up on February, tomorrow, February ninth. Secondary is dismissed at twelve forty-five, but elementary at one fifty-five. We have eighth grade open house at the high school tomorrow as well at six PM. We have February break coming up, February twenty-first, February twenty-fifth. Public budget meeting and March first, the annual hearing at seven thirty PM per the Charahoe Act. On March seventh, Hope Valley PTO meeting at six thirty PM. And then again, our Health and Wellness Subcommittee meeting at four o'clock PM on March eighth.
So now we're at the part where we have the school committee request for future agenda items or legal opinions. And Mr. Day, I did note your request to discuss the the activity funds. And I think what I gather is your concern that there's a not, there's not equity there. You're you're worried that there's some funds that are more rich than others, say, and that you want to make sure each student gets a a.
Well, if you if you look at the report, I mean.
No, I know. I agree.
Four thousand dollars in one account and three hundred dollars in another account. And I don't understand how you can say that the kids in the at that at that grade level are getting an equal opportunity to to share the middle school environment.
Right. So and I think it'd be important for us to understand what that money is actually used for, what kind of things it is used for. And then is there an ine, is there an inequity among the the grades? That would be something we should look at.
I do. I do have two other requests if I may.
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
On the March eighth meeting, an executive session, I'd like to have a discussion on school safety.
Okay.
And I do have a question. I was looking at the report here by, provided by state law, Charro Regional School Committee and bullying bullying report. And I'm looking at the the middle school here and I'm, do we have a problem over there? Seems to be, these other schools in the district are showing zero bullying and the middle school, the second semester had eight. And three, three the semester before and last year, they were up there, too. And these other schools. We got a problem. I'm asking, we got a problem. I'd like to have 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 some clarification on why the discrepancy between the middle school and the rest of these buildings, high school and Calor and the rest of them are are nonexistent. So that's my other request.
Yeah, I was, I was actually, I maybe I'm mistaken, Mr. Day. I kind of, I agree with you. I saw that bullying report and I thought in the past it was always presented in as part of a agenda item, not more, not an FYI, so we would have a chance to ask questions or discuss it. And I would just look to the committee. Am I remembering it incorrectly? Or did we have?
No, it's always been an FYI. You can pull it and discuss it, but Barry always put it in as an FYI. That's.
Okay, okay, maybe that, okay, maybe. Mr. Mr. Abbott, you have the floor?
Yes, there was something I read on on the internet, on Facebook. I think it was on the Wesley Wire to the effect that the Attorney General had issued a letter or a clarification that, in their opinion, it would be appropriate for school committee members to answer questions from the public or respond to the public during public forum. I'd like a clarification of that.
Oh, you want a clarification about whether or not we can respond to? Okay.
That's my, that the Attorney General has said that it's okay, but I don't have anything in writing.
Oh, that's okay. I understand your question.
Okay.
Excuse me, that would be probably a legal opinion. Can we take a vote on that one, please? Because you'd be asking John for his legal opinion, so we just need to take a vote.
Well, you know, Donna, it's in our, it's in our code of whatever about.
But John has said in the past not to answer, so I think you'd want to check with John.
Okay, if it's it's legal opinion, then we need to take a vote on that. Yes, I know. I know. I realize that, but, okay. Mr. Abbott, do you want to put it in a a whatever to the committee? Recommendation to the committee?
Legal opinion as to whether the Attorney General has changed their opinion or or recommendations regarding school committee members being able to reply to questions or comments during public forum.
Okay, we have a second on that? Donna, okay, Donna Chambers, Ms. Chambers seconded. Any discussion on Mr. Abbott's request? Okay, those in favor of having John? See. We have one, two, three, four, five, six. Catherine said seven, eight. Okay, those against? I am, I don't think we need it, but that's okay. And then recusals or abstentions? No? Okay, so that was, well, it wasn't unanimous, but it was it was passed. So we will get John to look at that for us and give us his legal opinion. Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Anyone else? No? Okay, I guess, Ms. Luzon, we're good.
You're ready?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, please. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. There's been a motion by Ms. Luzon, a second by Mr. Callahan to adjourn. Those in favor? I don't think anybody's going to oppose that. Thank you, and I'll have a good night.
Good night, home.
Thank you. Good meeting.